Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I will call for a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scholmar. Any discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries on to consideration of visitors. I do not have any at this time, so we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any discussion? If anyone would like anything, call. See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries on to information items and reports. The first presentation is our educational technology presentation. Come on forward.
Andy Carrier?
Yes. Welcome, Andy.
And as he's setting up, maybe I'll kind of give you guys kind of a review. As you know, year two, I started talking about how we were going to switch technology. And I really wanted technology used better in the classrooms and things like that. And so we were looking for someone. We never thought we'd find a St. Francis grad living out on the East Coast that wanted to come back. But I can tell you now that he has been exactly what we were looking for. An instructional leader, getting technology in teachers' hands, and teaching them how to use technology in the classroom. You can't just hand someone a device and say, "Use this." Give them all the fancy gadgets in the world, if you just say, "Use this," that's not how it works. So I'm hoping you will see what I'm talking about tonight. He's super creative, and on top of that, he is the debate coach.
One.
One of the debate coaches, but the kids love him, and he's super funny, and yeah. Are you going to show a picture of your three Huskies, or we're not starting off that way?
I have other pictures to show.
Okay. Anyway, we'll let Andy take it over from there, but I wanted you all to know how absolutely pleased I am with the direction we're heading in technology, so.
First, we have to be pleased with showing on the screen. There we are. Okay. So, thank you. It's been your pleasure. I could talk for sixty or ninety minutes on technology. Definitely need to seven to eight, so I'll give you my best seven or eight minutes here of what we have going.
Four?
I did want to start by just letting you know, I work with some great people, and I wanted to acknowledge their efforts. I put their names on the slide. Greg, Tracy, Liz, Ryan, Kim, Mark, Larry, and Kara, they're all just great workers in technology. And we have closed since August more than fifteen hundred trouble tickets from around our schools, which we think that we're really doing a pretty small pool of people. I think it's a good accomplishment and speaks to everybody's dedication and hard work. So none of, even this meeting, will be possible for this group, so I wanted just to start by saying that. There should be a picture here. Where is this? There it is. So today, we were cleaning, I thought you might like this picture just for tonight. We were cleaning out some, so when we recorded, the computer wasn't working, and it was opened up, and people had been stuffing, looks like Apple cores and gum wrappers. So all the things you find when you're working on technology, so here it is.
Oh my gosh.
Anyhow, my take on tech is that it's really like a system. And the presentation that I have here, if you're following along on your laptop, is going to be different. I cut this down quite a bit, but it's fine. None of the slides are different. And I think about tech as a system, and many systems that all have to work together in order to have a good system. And I have this fine picture of Tom Brady here, when he was drafted, and it's a reminder that people are the advanced systems, and so is everything related to technology. So this covers everything from help desk software to inventory to just really simple things like trying to get kids to be able to use one username and password for everything. So these are all systems we're working on right now, trying to make things better. One thing that, I thought, now I'll give you some examples of these as I go along. One thing we're working on is synchronizing our systems so that as soon as a kid is enrolled within campus, their login information is immediately pushed out to both Applet Directory and to Google's directory system within twenty minutes. So as soon as an open enrollment student, they'll then be active and ready to go. So it doesn't require a staff member to go in, or you know, notice that we have a new student. This will just happen automatically. So that's one example of what we're doing. I also think that the most important thing for us is our human system. It's easy, you know, it's easy to go shopping and buy a lot of technology for a school, but it doesn't improve the school without the people. And so I'm thinking about ways we can make technology better. And I think a lot of people in my position start with thinking about what should we buy? Is their first question. I start by thinking about what do our people, how can we equip our people to do the best job possible? So these are pictures of computer labs from about nineteen eighty-two, I would guess, based on what's in the picture, eighty-three, somewhere like that. And in some ways, schools haven't passed this viewpoint of technology. You walk on W O T computer lab, and you view your computer work. Well, in English class, we would never have a room called a paper or pencil. And in technology, you know, it's the equivalent. So the whole world is changing here, where kids are always going to have their devices with them, and every student will have a device of some kind, and that would just be like having a laptop or a pen. Related to this idea of systems, I found this quotation was shared with me by a friend, and I think it's worth considering in this context. It says, "You don't rise to the level of your goals, you fall to the level of your systems." Which means, in my business, you have to have good systems in place for chemistry. This is, we don't have this data for St. Francis, not organized like this. This is from the National Survey, and it highlights questions, roadblocks to teachers using technology. The number one roadblock half of teachers said was the lack of time to plan for integration of technology, and we're going to work on that. I already started some discussions there. We've taken care of some of these other big ones that we're working on. And then in the purple, lots of emphasis on staff development and integrating curriculum and creating that as a public, as a professional development system. So those are all things that we're working on here. So just a little sense of where we're coming from, from a research standpoint. And then last year, there was a survey done, I think this was in twenty twenty-one, this is the great consulting, is that twenty-one?
Yep.
Analysis of tech integration, and staff gave themselves scores on tech integration from zero to seven, and a lot of this was like around four-ish. Which isn't bad, but it means we can push up. And that was, and the company that did this, you know, has a page on our innovations related to technology diversion that we're doing there. So coming at this from a standpoint, we're really the first public discussion or public hearing that this, I circulated this with the principals last week. Successful implementation of technology depends on standards, evaluation, and kind of rethinking our teaching methods. So one thing that would be important would be finding some standards to guide our use of technology. So the International Society for Technology Integration has standards that they have put together for students, teachers, and all of us, students. So they're all here together. And then, of course, we can read this word on the screen, but I did just include this in your packet. These are words that describe, or should describe, our uses of technology. And I think that these are just great words to build from. You think about the year twenty twenty-one, in the creative category, adapting, collaborating, composing, device and podcasting. These are things that, these are twenty twenty-one skills, and things we want kids to do. We also need systemic evaluation, and the method that I've been pitching, I think is probably as simple as it gets, a little tiptoe toward, it's called a pickrat scale. And the bottom centers the teacher, and the left-hand side centers the student. Evaluates their experience with technology. And where you really want to be, ideally, is in that upper right corner, where technology is both creative and transformative. So somewhere in our system, we need to start working this into our thinking. And then I have a graphic here just showing what happens when brains start thinking. And of course, they light up nice and bright, and we want kids to be thinking. And I think there's three different ways of thinking that we can encourage as it relates to technology. One is called computational thinking, and we can use just these basic concepts, like looking for patterns, breaking things down into steps, removing unnecessary details. These are all things programmers do. It's also called algorithmic thinking. You still got to see that first. So it can look like this. Like reading the book Secret Codeers, learning binary number systems, which is a fun part of Secret Codeers, or counting in different systems, or programming, they come down to R and play with their laptops. These are all things computational thinking. But all of these things are computational thinking too. These also involve those same things, like looking for patterns, or abstraction. These things appear in all of our skills. So while it's called computational thinking, it's really a thinking that applies to all of our work. So I got here, and then about thirty, I was here, I signed on, voted grand. I think Beth shared the news with you all already, that we received just short of one point four million dollars for the emergency communication fund. And then we asked also for some money for the ESRA three funds. And so here is what our plan is to do. Our classrooms, general classrooms, we do an audio system. They have a microphone that just goes around the neck, real simple, and you can just see how this chart shows what works, the sound quality gets better. When people speak louder, their articulation declines. And so if you're learning a language, or it's hard for you to process, that's a real concern.
Okay, so the very first week, maybe that says eight twenty, sure, there was zero cases reported. Okay, the following week, which is the, that sounds, I mean, here, sure. Zero cases reported, zero cases reported. It looks to be five or almost cases reported. Okay, it looks to be between nine and twelve, so it's ten cases reported, up to fifteen, and that counts as twelve. If you aggregated all of those data, that would be the total number in that building from the beginning of when we started tracking the president. I will tell you that the last data point on that graph is this current week. And so that data point will move throughout the week, and it will not remain in a stable position on the ground until Friday after doing the, enter the last data point for them, their last update. Is there any way to find out, I mean, do I have to add all those to find out district-wide how many cases?
You could. Yep, you could.
Easier way would be to call me.
Yeah, you're right.
And people do.
And people do.
And that's what's so great is, we, I love that we have someone so confident in all of that. People will say, "I want to know, I demand to know, no, sounds good, I'll transfer it over." And they just, they can get the information. It's, it's so nice that it has been manageable, that we are able to just share that information. We did shut down a classroom, and I think in some ways that comforted people, saying, "Okay, when we do have a breakout, they're going to take it seriously, these are the parameters we used." Chris and I talked that entire evening, Nicole was helped with the messaging that went out. It was, it went well, it went really well. It was a good test for us, so.
It did what it was supposed to do.
It did what it was supposed to do. We didn't have to shut the whole school down, we did one classroom.
And then, like, looking at, let's say that, like, I look at the East Buffalo Elementary School, it says it has three on the top, and then it has five according to the latest graph. So, I mean, shutting down that, how many are in, like, did you give me, how many are in that school, like, from the graph?
My positives are in that school?
Yeah.
How many students are in this school?
How many cases of COVID positive are in this school? In year eight, we have eight in East Buffalo that have been closed or resolved, meaning the students or staff, that include staff that are in our community.
So it's the five.
Have passed their intended contagious window.
Sure.
And have returned back to learning, learning online. Right, that's eight for those.
Yep.
For current positive cases in East Buffalo, we have fourteen. So the eight have come before the last ten days.
Sure.
And the fourteen that are active have come in the last ten days. Which I think is a great, as Super Ten keys was just saying, is a great statistic highlight for you. The first four to six weeks of school are relatively low.
Yeah.
The last ten days, we almost doubled what we had in the first six weeks.
Yep.
Which is why the aggressive move was made, certainly, in that case.
Certainly.
Okay, that sounds good, that sounds good. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Mr. Schwartz?
Sorry, there is a person.
No, why do I?
So do you get the emails from the local county public health department?
Yes, sir.
So have you responded to them on their emails that they're sending home?
I told them not to.
Um, I'm just, no, so I have, there's, there's a good reason for that.
Yeah, I went through that a couple times myself. It was going to be, but I didn't.
I think, in the words of my mother, "Some things are really nice to say on a single."
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Mr. Humphrey?
It seems like we're doing a good job, and I appreciate the tracking, and I appreciate the hard work everyone's putting into this. In regards to our kind of implementation of people wearing a mask if they sell shoes. Like, do we have a policy, or do we need a policy if any teacher goes above and beyond that?
I don't think that's a policy. If a teacher, for example, is pregnant and would like people to wear a mask, we have allowed them to say, "I am pregnant, and I would really like it if everyone would wear a mask in my classroom." I have seen kids bend over backwards to try to find a mask so that they could wear that if they want in that classroom. There will always be a few that don't feel comfortable about it, there's parents that don't want their children wearing masks. I have yet to hear of a situation where someone is too aggressive with that. I know in a situation where a room that we may close down, that, that teacher may have been scared legitimately. I mean, all of a sudden, you know, kids are positive left and right, and I, I think fear kicks in a little bit. I would not like to see a policy, I think teachers have to have the freedom to say if they have a concern. I think we can continue to monitor that. I feel really confident in our principals kind of watching that as well. I guess if you wanted a policy, you could, but I think that really is overly managing our teachers, in my opinion.
What I would, I was just looking to say, I think parents maybe aren't clear on whether or not a mask is just some teacher kind of perhaps panicking or nervous, or whatever their situation, like you said.
Yeah.
And the parents need to know, and take that politely with a grain of salt, and still, they have the choice, no matter what teacher asks them, to wear or not to wear a mask. I just wanted to make sure that's clear, because that's a lot of parents that have asked me that question. Thank you.
Mr. Starr, are you just, any other questions, comments?
Anything else?
Yep.
All right, we'll now move on to action items. The first action item is letter A, consideration of new employment, school board member. Do you have a motion to approve?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Bravo, Mr. Humphrey.
Yeah, well, and I have a thing like Rob does, and like Mike does, I will, I will abstain from something. Before I know it, I'm actually living here. I would, I would like to abstain, obviously, from the vote, because I think that's part of the ideology. But at the same point, from the category of just trying to be good, I plan on not taking a salary, I think it's a legal thing, I think you have to take it, and I'm going to do what I do with my school board, just throwing it back, whatever. But I, I, I'm just trying to help out, I don't even know, owning my business, having my kids, if I would be able to help out. But I'd like to hear the queue, like, we got Mr. Bartucci, we got the superintendent, whoever else can step up and help us, we appreciate it, but I, this is no way it's going to supplant an income. And I, my tax people say, "Don't take it anymore," so it's, it's just a formality. But I will be abstaining, but that's, you can, I've got a call, like, oh, great, now you're taking two salaries from the school board. It's, you know, I want to lighten myself up, but it's, so this is, I just wanted to clear the air on that. But so there's your conscience when you vote for that in the audience, I'm just going to help out where I can, if I can.
Any other comments, Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. You just started with somebody, and you're saying, "Did you two seconds?" That's great, thank you. Uh, so appreciate you abstaining in voting, and voting for races, but actually, glad to be saying for those boys as well. How's that sound?
Yeah.
And it's kind of sounding basically, thanks again.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We will move on to now our second action item, which is that it be consideration to approve the level of understanding for the bus drivers. Do you have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Scholmar. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Discussion, comments? See none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And is anybody abstaining?
Yeah.
No, well abstention? Did you get that?
On the last one.
Oh, and he also abstained on the, on the page. All right, we'll move on to letter C, consideration to approve level of understanding for educational assistance. Do you have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Discussion?
We're discussing, we're hoping that what we're doing here is going to help retain, maintain our EA's, bus drivers, and so forth. We're just hoping, you know, that surround the area, what they're doing, and hope our people are going to stick with us. We've spent around the Mountmore, we're on boats, and we do summon. And the EA, we've always said EA is the angels of our school, that have stuff down there in that area, and it's unbelievable what they go through every day. I'm glad we're helping out here.
Mr. Humphrey?
I concur. The conversations I'm having, you know, you can only make a tough job such and anything better than it is. And flat out, you know, driving a bus, still driving a bus with a busload of torches, you have, you have the EA's, they deal with all this stuff, craziness, and sometimes it's hard, and sometimes it's demanding, and it's, it's all this. So, and you, you try and make the situation better, you try and make the work conditions better, but it always comes down to, yeah, but then we're still not paying enough. So I appreciate in this kind of correction in these two categories, and that's why I've supported that.
Any other comments, questions, Mr. Schwartz? I think most of us are hoping that we can fill the positions we have and be comparable to some of the surrounding districts, which right now, it's difficult to fill these, but we can't get. Kids are at school, and they're not going to learn in class. Same thing with the EA's, once they're here, they have, I think we've been a number short in EA's for the last couple of years. So let's hope that this correction will work to improve the educational needs of our students and our staff. Any other questions, comments? If not, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries because nobody, yes, so carries. We'll move on to consideration to, oops, approve joint powers agreement between Anoka County and the municipality, townships, and school districts in Anoka County to allocate costs for election expenses. Do you have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Scholmar. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Discussion, questions, Mr. Schwartz?
Really?
I know you can't say no to this.
So the, to.
You just can't.
So this is understanding, my understanding, wrong, I mean, so we purposely moved our school board elections years ago to two and four, so that whenever there's a presidential or a senate or something election that's going to be at ours, it's the same as mine. If we did outside that window, like, you know, Hampton's doing this year, then that's, they had big ones, as schools, so I'd say, mind only we.
There's a lot of districts that are having that right now, because there's people leaving.
So then, local county, who thinks they're saving money, pushes that down to us and says that we have to be the board, no matter when we have it, for our part of the school board elections, or for.
You are category C, so what that means is you'll be taking a smaller chunk of it all. This is super common. I know Mr. Bartucci used to work in the county thing, and he saw this coming a long time ago. I mean, all counties are, you know, spreading the joy when it comes to election and the cost. You know, we do use our facility and things like that, it'll kind of offset some of those things. We do have people like Kim that work when the elections, so some of that will offset that as well. I wish there was a way you could say, "No, thank you, I know it's on your agenda as a joint powers agreement, you get to vote yes or no." Feel free to vote no, but I don't know what that means. I mean, they're going to assess you, your portion of it. It's kind of like saying, "No, thank you on taxes." I, I say no, they're still going to send them your way.
Okay, what do you think about a no here, Mike?
Yeah, I, I think it'll be under five thousand dollars. I don't think it'll be excessive in any way. Do you have an idea at all, Eric?
I mean, the difference between what, what's been happening, and what's going to happen with this is, is really the recapture of postage costs. Because what counties are running into, and I speak of this just from my previous life, but what counties are running into is that you have just this incredible uptick in absentee voting, and the cost of buying these envelopes and producing all this postage, because state law requires that you not only send it, but you also pre-stitch an envelope to send it back, and that, that became quite a, quite a cost during the coming. So basically, what they're looking for is the ability to come back and say, "Well, you have this portion of the ballot, so therefore you have this whole portion of postage expense."
So hopefully.
I don't expect it to be a huge cost, but certainly it's on the way forward. So basically, their responsibility is that this kind of sharing. And that's because everything you've heard from, from all this setting on those, you know, and those kinds of meetings, was that now that absentee ballot became more prevalent and more people are doing it, and it just, you know, and I know there's people that feel a bit worried about absentee voting, but because it's kind of here in Minnesota, there's no excuse absentee voting, but if you kind of have the first taste of what lots write absentee voting in Brooklyn, the expectation is that absentee ballot will continue to happen behind the curve in future elections, COVID or not COVID.
Mr. Humphrey?
And you asked the superintendent just that, what do you mean they use our places, like book-own places?
Well, there's times that, I mean, you can use any place you want, but they've, they've, you work with Mr. Lindell, Lindell? Can't remember how you say his name, Paul. But they, they've used our, you know, this room for voting. I mean, there's times that we offer our facilities for, to offset some of that.
Could be charged.
I don't think so. I don't think you can, it'll get really.
Charged of the post instead?
It's going to get really interesting now, and you brought up a good point on, say someone was to step away from the board. You move to Florida to enjoy the lovely weather, and there's an open seat. It's going to get really confusing now, because is that going to be split by everyone? Because we have to run an election now? So there's a lot of questions that are still out there. Like I said, every county that I've seen is doing this now. This is not unusual. It's become the norm.
And it could get to be a little tricky too, because, I mean, you know, we don't want to get into about town providing election equipment, because we need election equipment, and, you know, things like that, having to train our own poll workers because they're operating as a whole new place. So, I mean, really, it is a lot of the dream, and, you know, to try to encourage voting and to increase access to voting, because some of these, maybe not in St. Francis, but some other notable areas might struggle with having, you know, town halls that are suitable for having a voting station. So that's where schools can jump in. So that's where schools can jump in and, you know, provide a larger space, particularly in COVID.
Does that help you?
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose names aye. Yeah? So it was a six to one, Ms. Johnson voting. And now we will move on to school board member reports tonight. Any thoughts? I'll start with Ms. Johnson. Mr. Schwartz?
Uh, and two things. As tradition, I do use my gifts and I appreciate this from people. First on the list, we use our kettle corn, we use the St. Francis types of press box. That would be you, Mr. Star. Thanks again.
If I can help out, I don't know if you ever thought, including your football at the football games, the agreement is we always pay back 20% to the district. And the actual cost is 171 down to 175. That's why we always pay back to the district for some of the ground. Sooner or later, and still more.
Thirty-four dollars and seventy cents from the Coca-Cola gives, seed of free college school used for school needs. One thousand seventeen dollars and forty-six cents for flight touch, used for seed of great elements of school needs. And four hundred eighty dollars from, I get the strong every time. It's a black label, giving fun.
What do you call it?
D L A C K, D, giving fun. Four hundred eighty dollars to the seed of great elements of school, so thank you very much. A couple of things, Owen, I like, thanks again, Mr. Star personally for doing that on gifts. That's great. With the press box and, and thank you Jake for doing that on the school list. That's, that's really nice.
Think I'm going to line up that, my right cake's buzz.
I'm going to mention one of the St. Academy, Academy eleven career, Kyle, no, I'm sorry, which is his name? Lukanon, L U K K O N E N. Competed in Minnesota State Future Fund of America Tracute September 24th. We and the St. Academy are proud of him as he scored 40,000 and took first place out of 315 seats in Missouri, so thank you very much. That's great. I think people don't know that FFA is a program running for five years at St. Academy. Offers a lot of great opportunities for our students. He's advisor, and also he's true, attended the competition with him, so that's great. Wonderful. Looking at a simple, before I say, a lesson, Kill Soccer, this is really great. Undefeated, 15-0, most wins ever in a season, most shutouts ever in a season. And he was goals in this season, who scored on that, which he scored. And the quarterfinals are Wednesday against Becker F. And I found out the time is at the clock. That's wrong. Yes.
The time was correct, the goals allowed, either tied or beat the state rep.
State rep.
And then that, very.
Emma Neck is our.
Right, yes, it's really cool. So it's really, go Wednesday, that's great. Last thing, got to push it some more because it's great. You're great at this, you're the one that brought it up on the table. Very, thank you very much. Press box, people want to keep getting rid of the press box, wonderful. Getting enough funds in there, make that a, a figure of addition to our field, our programs itself. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Scholmack? Thank you, Mr. Scholmack, Ms. Anderson?
Just wanted to add on the soccer things. Emma Neck was, or a top performer in the community. She received that last year also, you know, mid-season, so she can do that more. I want to thank Zoe Olson for seeking volunteers for, for class from the board to kind of answer questions. Students will be asking questions of the board members related to our jobs, our history in St. Francis, and also our community Johnson's strengths, the HAP policy and the UNF system. And Mr. Humphrey and I are both participating Friday morning, right for the meeting, so.
Mr. Humphrey?
Thank you. So I was able to attend the high school band concert with a new band director last week. And what a joy, holy cow, for wanting to get music back in schools. And this new director is just colorful, it was, it was insane. It was so much fun. Really enthusiastic, really talented, the kids are just picking up on it, you can feel the vibe. It's wonderful. He's also looking to, in our middle school band, we have Mr. Warner, who used to go around the elementary schools, and he's now the middle school band director. And these people are working together, they're really trying to, you know, dig a rap program model kind of the trench that's, it was COVID, it was pandemic, you know, more people didn't take gym and it's the music and we had a really, my son is in band and he, he said he's played more music already this year than he's played in the past two years. It's just wonderful. It has a lot to do with the kids and the parents wanting to get back into certain things, but also these directors are just probably the greatest students ever happened to our band program. Part of what they're doing is they're welcoming people coming in mid-year. They're welcoming people that are in other activities, like, you know, you can be a choir, you can be in a volleyball, you can work with your stereo. They're doing, help, you need help renting instruments, do you want to borrow instruments? Let's get these kids to be having these instruments, let's get these kids in music. We all know what that does to people's grades, people's attention span, it's just a wonderful thing. This Friday, the football game, not only is the high school band going to be there, which they've been in many times, but they're inviting the middle school kids to go and play. That's going to be pretty cool. And then since we just had that concert for the high school, the middle school's going to have their winter concert in early December, so look for that. So my Humphrey sent check is going to be for those two directors, Mr. Bichard and Mr. Warner, the band directors. The students are going to be the band members. It's just wonderful to listen to this music, living through a tournament or PFC in our gymnasium at a middle school. And kudos to these kids for getting back in it. And then the band boosters, we need help, but, you know, there's people stepping up. Not only are the two directors recruiting, but the band boosters are recruiting and we already have people signing up for a meeting coming up. And that's good to hear. It's hard to get people involved and get out of their shells and there are people stepping up to, to do so and so. And appreciate the current band boosters and the future band boosters.
Mr. Star?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, two again in your staff are making a hard right decision. They shut down their fifth grade class, not easy to shut down a class, the same kids back home again. They get the nightmares they had last year of being home for learning. Yet they're saying good at learning like, what, eight to 10 days, and will be back with us. So thank you for making that hard right decision there. The best program went up here on November the 11th. I sent, I laid out flyers on the front table there. Pat Johnson designed our flyers here for us again. The printer and I filled evening, the printer donated the cost of our flyers. If you have any vets that you know, please invite them to our fourth annual program. Major General John Trost, who is a good volunteer in our district, will be our speaker. He's a major general retired, Minnesota Army National Guard. So please put the word out, matter of fact, this is the Major General Trost's last speech. He said, I was going to do it last year, but Mike and Doc didn't do it. So he's going to be our speaker this year, will be the last group he talks to. He's, I've been doing it for a lot of years. So please get the word out, any vets we know, invite them to our program. I want to see a huge group at our school. They go from 8:30 to 9:45, working Mr. Austin, the band and choir. We're going to have a nice program in here. That's all we have, thank you.
And I know I sent you all a note on that, I don't want anyone upset. I, for the first time ever, will be missing this. My dad is, they're having a big award for some of the veterans in his group and I'm going to do that and I'm going to be speaking to some youth as well. So I think for the first time ever, I'm going to miss it and that's kind of sad, but also, you know, we've got to spread that around to everyone, so. I, I know I sent that in an email to you, but I've talked to Mr. Austin in high school and I'll remind them, I'll write them about it as well. And Mr. Trost, you'll be able to talk me into it again. You will, use your magic powers.
All right, the only thing I want to do is thank all those, the little ones in the elementary for the fun, Brian, that has their, we.
They're moving.
I heard about it from my grandkids, they were so excited. And the parents really enjoyed it too. They, they loved going up and cheering them on and so, yeah, great job. I think silly string or something is happening.
Yes, I didn't think they could hit $30,000 at St. Francis Elementary, but they did. So next Monday, I get to be silly stringed. I thought I was going to be sleeping on a roof, so I guess I'm kind of happy. Elementary principals do anything to get kids to read, raise money, right, Shelly? Yeah, so I thought, oh, they'll, they're 20,000, they'll be done. And then they hit the 25,000 and then the entire PTO is reaching out, they're like, they're going to hit this 30,000. I said, there's no way. So next Monday, the kids all get to silly string me. It's fun, at least I'm not sleeping on a roof.
Mr. Scholmack?
We'll see if my Huskers beat your Gophers, we'll go after that.
All right, seeing no other discussion, this meeting is adjourned at 7:42.
We should probably put a side wager on it. I'm thinking tweets for the board meeting. Mine will be bright red, yours will be, yeah, we'll figure out.